Hi, you. You can make an adjustment. No, no, no. We have an extra seat.
Want me to get in?
Sure. We're here. Okay. Hi. How are you? A little out of it today, but it's all good.
This meeting will now come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor, excuse me, Mayor Protem Hunt. Councilmember Patanna.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Leoni.
Here.
And Council liaison Gilbertson.
Here.
I apologize, Council liaison Johnson, you snuck in.
Here.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council's special meeting of March 19th, 2019. We have one item on our study session agenda this evening, and it is the livability initiative update. I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Jeff Tyne to begin.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Really appreciate this opportunity. Of course, as you know, these study sessions are very valuable time. They allow for us to do a deeper dive into different policy issues. But from time to time, we think it's also important to look at the big picture, to really look at some of the more strategic goals that we have as an organization and as our leadership. And so talking about things like our mission and our goals and vision, it's important to discuss periodically because in our busy schedules, sometimes we need to take that step back to really make sure that we're on the right track. And so we want to often ask ourselves those questions. What do residents most need from their city? How do we attract visitors and workforce talent and business investment going forward? And essentially, what is our vision for the city of Peoria and how do we get there? These questions not only matter, of course, to our citizens, but also to the staff that you do see here today. We have a large amount of our staff that are really here because your vision and your ideas that you've provided to us over the last 18 months really give us a clear sense of what is our direction and purpose. So as a reminder for you and for the audience here, the council put forth a challenge to make Peoria a distinctive, livable, great city. And luckily, we believe, of course, that we are well on our way. We are known as a well-managed, safe community. But what we see is that cities with a great reputation have more than that. Their distinction comes through a sense of positive pride and identity for your civic audience. It also means that you're cities that offer opportunities to explore and experience things in a whole new way. And in addition to that, that we ensure that we are attracting and retaining a talented workforce for generations to come. And your leadership has taken this to heart. So today, what we wanted to do is kind of a unique offering of a progress report of the livability goals that you provided us just a short 18 months ago, to really show our approaches for how we can be a city of distinction. So with that, you'll hear from six of what we're calling our captains. There are department directors that you'll all very much be familiar with. These captains have led teams of our emerging leaders throughout the organization to work on your council goals, to really make them inspiring and relevant. So leading this effort, we do have Jay Davies, our Chief of Staff to the City Manager, who has led this important process, and I'll pass it over to Jay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're excited for this opportunity to check in with you on the status of the livability initiatives that you created at your November 2017 council workshop. The initiatives are both meaningful and straightforward at the same time and help any of us in public service answer the question, what do you do? The themes that will emerge may seem repetitive at first, but reveal the extent to which these cross-functional lines resulting in strong collaboration across the organization. Each topic tonight represents the hard work and creativity of a team made up of key thought leaders from a variety of departments across the organization, brought together to operationalize their respective livability goal. You'll see them all listed at the end of the presentation. As far as the structure, let me get to that. There we are. We're going to start with some sub-points. Each captain is going to take you through their initiative, starting with a set of sub-points representing the approaches that we agreed upon for defining success. From there, the captain will have a slide for each of those sub-points, using those to tell a story around the visions that expand on the meaning of that goal. In so doing, they will highlight things that we have recently accomplished that support the vision, followed by a couple of things that are happening next. These are not dreams or wish list items. These are things where the wheels are already in motion in terms of resources or fully-developed action plans. In the interest of time, these will represent only a small sampling of our accomplishments. And then finally, before we move to the next topic, we will pause to hear your feedback to find out maybe if we scratched an itch or if we have piqued your curiosity. So with that, these are the livability initiatives. The six initiatives, of course, are efficient transportation, economic competitiveness, arts culture and recreation, healthy neighborhoods, superior public services, and smart growth. Working closely with you, we carved out these six areas as a way to meet your charge in engaging the organization to differentiate ourselves as a city and define success. The icons you see here are finding their way into our budget documents, the general plan, and a variety of internal communications, ensuring these critical initiatives become ingrained in our culture. In short, they will live far beyond tonight's presentation. With that, we'll start with efficient transportation. And whenever we launch into a study or do a survey, one theme always emerges. Access to jobs or services comes back as a top priority for a large segment of our community. In many ways, access means transportation, and transportation plays a broad role in shaping economies. When it comes to streets, the best cities embrace the idea that streets are more than just a means of conveying cars. Streets are social and economic engines. They are for people. And with that, Adina will take it from here.
Thank you for that introduction, Jay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Transportation is a great place to start. I really feel it connects all the initiatives we're going to talk about tonight. So not only the economic engines that Jay talked about, but also our neighborhoods, our arts, our culture, and where we recreate. With that, I want to talk to you a little bit about our working group. I assembled a great team from leaders here at the city, from all different facets that work on transportation. As we know, everyone feels that they're a traffic engineer if you drive on the roads, so I had plenty of people to choose from. What we did was we talked about what makes a cohesive transportation system. We focused on what we do well, what we want to do when we grow, and what makes Peoria a special place. We came up with the following five focus areas. Public transportation, a complete pedestrian and bicycle network, robust roadway maintenance programs, technology solutions now and in the future, and signature streets. Think of our P-83 area. Now we will dive deeper into each of these areas with visions and examples. Mayor and Council, based on your guidance, we believe one of our main priorities is to connect all people in Peoria by providing public transit systems that facilitate seamless travel throughout the city. These may look familiar to you. It was with your vision of providing additional shade at bus stops and a cohesive theme, we were able to install these along Peoria Avenue and on our relatively new 83rd Avenue fixed route service. And the more exciting news is what's coming. Connecting that fixed route 83rd Avenue with the people up north with our first circulator that will be launching in April. We are all very excited about this connection to bring transit opportunities to people further north in the city. And if you've been to Old Town, if you've been by Peoria and Grand, you will see construction happening for our new park and ride. This will provide shaded parking so people can leave their car for the day and they can hop in a shuttle, they can get on one of our fixed routes, they can get on the Grand Limited Express and get to jobs and get back home safely. Advancing your vision of public transit means planning the next steps. We feel this is best done by completing a transit master plan. We are going to be asking for this funding in the upcoming operating budget. This will allow a chance for us to look at where we go forward. Where is that next fixed route going to be? Where is the next circulator? Does commuter rail make sense for our citizens? Why do we ask these questions? Well, as you know, Prop 400 sales tax is going to be ending in 2025, and the citizens are going to be ready for a vote to possibly extend that tax. So we need to know what projects could benefit our citizens. Part of a connected transit plan is addressing the first and last mile. We envision this happening by providing pedestrian and bicycle improvements that provide comfortable, safe, and convenient access throughout the city. We recently completed one of those projects on 83rd Avenue. This was installing new bike lanes and a sidewalk to connect residents of Rock Springs and West Wing with Happy Valley and 83rd. This is the location where we have new restaurants and businesses coming in, and we also have that circulator route that I just talked about. Some people prefer to travel on our New River Trail system. We are going to be enhancing that with trail system wayfinding signage. That way, when you're on the trail, you'll be able to see a map of the city. You'll know where the trailheads are so you can get some shade or perhaps fill up your water bottle. It will also, once again, provide information about bus stops. We're trying to connect it all together in one cohesive system. To advance this vision, we are also focused on the safety aspects of travel. You may remember the Green Bike Lane projects. You brought this up to us last year at a workshop similar to this. We are planning, as soon as spring training is over, to go out to 83rd and Thunderbird and implement our first project. We also have implemented it into the Happy Valley Road project that's going to be happening. The other area we want to look at is collector roadways near schools. If you've been around a school lately, you know a lot of kids ride their bikes to school, so we want to make sure that those bike lanes are very easy to identify and make a difference. The other part of comfort for our pedestrians is shade. We just kicked off the Shade Master Plan's first meeting with our consultant and a team of people from across the city. This master plan is going to look at right tree, right place, what are the types of trees that we want for shade, what is the area that we need to plant trees so as they mature, they aren't lifting our sidewalks or dying. We also know in some areas, we cannot provide trees. There's areas where the sidewalk and the wall are very close together, so we're going to look at man-made shade alternatives. We're going to propose different varieties and do some test projects across all areas of the city.
Mayor and Council, I should mention on that is you'll see in the upcoming budget funding also to follow through some of the recommendations of this master plan that would be scheduled for in the next year.
Good. Thank you.
If you drive in other parts of the valley or in other parts of the country and then return to Peoria, you will notice a serene and quiet that comes from our well-maintained roadways, free of potholes unlike many others. Mayor and Council, you have supported staff through the investment in our capital programs for various programs that provide transportation infrastructure that is well-maintained and safe, preserving investments for the future. 2017, our Public Works Department came to you with their plans for our pavement preservation project, and you listened and you understood how important this was to the citizens, and you reinvested in that program. So we have a well-balanced program that we implement throughout the city. One program that you don't find in many cities, I don't know of another one that has it, is our bridge maintenance program. That is funded in the 10-year CIP. Arizona Department of Transportation inspects our bridges every two years, and we actually have a program that we can go out and address any issues that they bring to our attention. We've also used a small amount to invest in the aesthetics, the repainting of handrails and other items that come up on bridges that make them look a little more attractive. Speaking of enhancements, Community Works Wall Painting Program is one that goes a long way. It's a very small project, but we use that along collectors and arterials so that we can update and refresh some of those areas and older areas of the community. A lot of people travel our streets, and we want them to have the best view as they come into our city. Speaking of preserving past investments, we have the Right-Away Landscape Refresh Projects. These projects are finalizing the design right now. They're focused on 67th Avenue, 75th Avenue, and 91st Avenue. And this is where we've already done the wall painting. We're coming back and redoing the irrigation and the landscaping, providing shade along the roadways and also providing desert landscaping for low maintenance. We have always had support and vision from you, Mayor and Council, on technology investments in our city. Our vision is to implement technology advancements for all modes of transportation, providing effective networks and corridors. We have an international award-winning program where we have intersection recording cameras. These are at approximately half of our signalized intersections. The police department has strict protocol as to when they can utilize this technology, but we as engineers can use it on a daily basis. We've been fortunate to use it at monitoring school egress and ingress. We've also used it when we've made changes in traffic control so that we can monitor how it's progressing. How do we do that? It is with our updated traffic management center. With your vision, we installed our first traffic management center about 12 years ago when we moved into what we call the new building. Since that time, the servers have started failing and screens were starting to not work. So this is a look at our recently installed new system. It allows us to view 20 intersections at the same time, or we can blow up to one very large intersection on that wall. We're excited about this technology. As I said, as we make changes, we can look at how that's affected the commuters the next day, and we can review footage from hours that we aren't here at work. Our vision of technology advancements includes autonomous vehicle options. Last week, we were excited when a company actually visited the city of Peoria to talk about what that could look like. It's a company that does this in other cities. We are looking at possibly having this type of shuttle service in a P-83 area. We need to find the right supplier that works with us that's a good fit. More to come for this one, I'm sure. Last year, we implemented an adaptive signal program on Bell Road with other cities and with ADOT. You can't see that picture very well, but let me explain what the adaptive technology does. It is artificial intelligence for signal controlling. It's always scanning the traffic live and making adjustments to the signal timing, deciding how much green time or red time should happen based on traffic. As we all know, 7:00 AM on Tuesday is not the same as 2:00 AM on Sunday, so we need to have a system that changes with the actual live traffic. It started with raised landscape medians, and then we went all in with the P-83 streetscape. With your vision and direction, we strive to provide signature streets that identify our city's uniqueness and incorporate placemaking and identity creation. The next object of our attentions is the Auto District. I will be coming back very soon for a council meeting to get approval to install monumentation signage on Bell Road and landscape medians for the Auto District area. When it comes to bridges, Peoria has been truly unique in your vision to construct aesthetically pleasing bridges. This started on Thunderbird Road. You've seen it recreated on Beardsley Road in Happy Valley over the New River. The next bridge over the Aqua Free on Happy Valley, this is the rendering of what we're going to be building. This should be coming back to council before summer break. Where is the next signature street going to be? We've all asked ourselves. Old Town is what we are thinking, the 83rd Avenue streetscape. This would be connecting Cotton Crossing to Monroe to Grand along 83rd Avenue. And this vision does not include a raised landscape median. It is focused on a narrower street with a larger pedestrian activity zone, areas where we could have outdoor dining and where we could have tree-lined streets. This is going to be proposed as part of our CIP that you'll be seeing in the next few While not every road can be given its own unique identity, they can all be celebrated with our cohesive entry monument. We have currently installed 10 of these throughout the city and continue to install them on an annual basis and with CIP projects. I hope we share the same transportation vision. I've tried to sum it up into one very long run-on sentence. Peoria is the place where a connected transportation network incorporates multimodal options and technology into well-maintained signature streets that let you know when you have arrived. So what have you been hearing from your constituents? We feel that this vision should be staff, of course, led by you, and what you hear from the people you represent. Is there anything that we missed? Any ideas you'd like to share?
Council, what is your feedback on this section? Yes, Councilmember Patanna.
Thank you, Mayor. Way back in 1991, I sat on a regional transportation committee downtown Phoenix, and what I noticed was all the bus routes were being, were going to Mesa, Scottsdale, and Tempe. Light rail was coming in, it was going to Mesa, Tempe. And so the question I asked 28 years ago was, when is the West Valley going to start getting some bus routes? And they said, you're 20 years out. And that really is true. We were 20 years out. Well, now we have, you know, the bus service on 83rd Avenue, we're going to have the circulator starting, and, you know, it's a start. And the fact that you're putting together a transportation master plan is really kind of a big deal. What is going to be the next route we have? Bus routes are very expensive, and so we have to be very particular where they're going to be going. So I think that, and then you look at the bus stops and the shade we're putting in, I think you're on the right track. We finally did get bus service on 83rd Avenue 20 years later, but it's arriving in the West Valley now, and I think the master plan will help determine where the next route goes. So I think you're spot on with that.
Councilmember Finn?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wanted to thank you for addressing a couple of things that have been an issue for the constituents in my district, which was the right-of-way landscaping and some of the walls and different things and doing some maintaining. And that's kind of about all, I guess, you can really do down there is maintain them and kind of, you know, keep the beautification. But what I really loved about this presentation was about the forward thinking with the new roads and having, you know, the bike lanes there and to make it so that it really does kind of is more conducive to some personal transportation, whether it be bike riding, jogging, whatever it may be. I really think that's fantastic that that is, that that's part of our thought process. And then one quick question that I might have missed, the artificial intelligence. I love that part. Is that in place now or is that something that we're looking to move towards?
Councilmember Finn, that is currently on Bell Road. Our section is considered from 73rd to 99th, although it stretches all the way to Scottsdale and through Surprise, in different sections with different technology that they're testing. We are looking forward with the same group in our section, Glendale, Maricopa County, and ADOT, for doing Olive Avenue next.
That's great, because I think there are other cities that can find my car in traffic and make sure I hit every red light as I go down Thunderbird. I'm almost positive of it. So this is great. I really appreciate it. It's fantastic. Thank you.
Phenomenal job. What are we hearing from our constituents? You've hit on most of them. I mean, they're talking about the 83rd bus route. They're talking about the new circulator, which has come into effect in less than a month, a month's time. I just hope that, you know, as you build your transportation master plan, that we look beyond that and say, okay, we've got this circular, where else can we, how farther south can we go, or how further north or east or west can we take that circular as we start to, you know, we're only hitting a small concentration of a route right now, but as we look at our population growth, where can we expand at? And I know that you guys will do a phenomenal job in kind of guiding where that needs to go, but again, hoping that you'll reach out to constituents and having, you know, open meetings or survey monkeys or whatever, just really always keeping in touch with the constituents and saying, hey, we're here to listen. What do you want? So phenomenal job.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Very, very nice presentation, Adina. And I know lots of your people fed into this, so thanks to them as well. I really have only heard of one constituent with a complaint, and we all know that people are way more likely to call if they have a complaint than they are if things are going well. And I just want to really say how much your team just jumped right in and we met on the location and assessed the pavement and we're moving forward. So that, to me, was just service above and beyond what I would have expected. Needless to say, I'm thrilled that the Old Town 83rd Avenue section is going to get some special attention this next year. We're moving right along, lots of attention, and, gosh, well-deserved. I think we're past 28 years on being ready.
Well, I completely appreciate this. I think this really takes us to the next level. We're looking to be a city of distinction, but really what we need to do is be a city of our residents, citizen-centric, you know, a place where people care about living, and we're doing that. We're bringing government down to the point of the citizens, and that's what we need to do. We don't need to be a big government. We need to be a hometown. And these things, such as the circulator and the Shade Master Plan and, you know, bike routes, all of those things bring government down to usability for the citizens who reside here, and that's really our job as government. So I did have one, one suggestion. I know we're putting in lots more bike lanes, but we already have the New River Trail, which is a bike lane, I mean, a bike path. We have lots of other trails. I'm wondering if we can brand our bike and trail systems because they already exist, and we should be putting up signs so that people know where to find them. I think we already have a lot of bikers and, you know, let's give it a name and let's give it some signage and let's show people that we're proud that they're on the trails and that they have a, you know, they're at a destination when they arrive there, when they're, when they're in Peoria, they have arrived.
That, Mayor. We think the wayfinding is a start, but we do need more signage along the way to get people there. And we do have a really robust map system that does share with people where they connect. So we're moving forward that way, and I'm sure you'll hear more about it as you listen tonight.
Oh, okay. I'll just wait right here. Good. Thank you.
Excellent feedback. We appreciate that. So our next initiative is economic competitiveness and links together many factors, including, but going far beyond, economic growth to encompass employment creation, the quality of the public realm, transportation, infrastructure, safety, security, education, culture, many things. These linkages touch on all six of your initiatives, reminding us how important they are as a comprehensive set of approaches. And Rick Buss will take us through it.
Mayor and Council, Adina's got some pretty cool stuff, I think. Like that, you're going to see what Jay just touched upon, you're going to see some overlap. So economic competitiveness is all about promoting and building a community that's known for being world-class, sustainable, and future-ready. As Jay just mentioned, economic development also does not, I'm sorry, probably. Oh, thanks, Jay. Appreciate that. Yeah, that's right, right? Economic development is also, does not happen in a vacuum, and I think that's a common theme that you're going to see across all of the livability elements. That said, working closely with City Management, the Communications Department, our Department of Economic Development, we've developed a marketing campaign as Peoria's the Place, World-Class, Sustainable, and Future-Ready. Our recommendation is to maintain the alignment of this marketing campaign and branding relative to the livability category of economic competitiveness. You've undoubtedly have seen some of the marketing collateral. I know you've seen some videos. You may have been at spring training where you see it out in center field. And we use these to promote and increase the visibility of Peoria locally, regionally, nationally, and internationally. Our overall vision is to build a community that is known for being world-class, sustainable, and future-ready. And there's a reason why I continue to say those words. It's a common theme that we're shooting for. So the following slides are a deeper dive into this overall vision with a subset of gold statements along the, each thematic themes, I'm sorry. All right, so I gotta make sure I'm doing this. So first goal is to build a reputation as a city of world-class industry clusters, standards, and practices. So what does it, what does it mean to be world-class? It means to strive to be a world leader, not a follower, in both quality practices and industries. It means to strive to be a world leader, not a follower, in both quality practices and industries. To have a reputation as being world-class, it means to not settle on standards, but rather put ourselves on par with the world's great cities and demand the best. It means having world-class businesses, entertainment districts with high-quality head-of-household jobs, great restaurants, and signature retail. And with world-class amenities, it means a strong reputation of excellence. Peoria is well-positioned to achieve all of this. So one of the things we've done is we've identified, go back one, targets and deployed what's called C2B. So C2B stands for City to Business. It's a outreach program that we've instituted. So within the last past six months, we have identified target industries such as advanced business and financial services, advanced manufacturing, bioscience and healthcare, technology and innovation, just to name a few. Within those target industries, we are reaching out to target companies, so we're going directly to the companies, and recruiting from target markets. We're looking at specific markets, companies, industries, companies, and markets, all very targeted with an ROI focus. To accomplish this, we have deployed a robust C2B program. As I've said, it's an acronym for Proactive City to Business Recruitment Program, actively reaching out to bring the best to Peoria while reaching out to our great businesses that are already here. And I think that's a very key point, seeking to help them grow. So we've also deployed a, I guess we missed one up here, one of our bullet points, we'll have to come back to it. We deployed a concierge program. So you've, our concierge program is all about customer service, something we know that is near and dear to each of you. The concierge program, which receives inbound requests regardless of the nature of the request, it doesn't have to be economic development, routes them to the appropriate department, and has a follow-up protocol to ensure the loop is closed and the customer is served. Further as part of the concierge program, we have also instituted a proactive outreach program to strategically reach out to our local businesses to offer assistance in their success. Since the launch of the concierge program in November, we've assisted 23 businesses, sent out 227 introductory emails to new businesses, have received 33 cases, inbound calls, resolved 24 of those, and we're working on nine right now. So we've also attended two grand openings. So this is how we're not forgetting who's already here and helping them grow. So citywide employment centers. We've identified citywide employment centers and aligned them with our industry targets with C2B efforts. As you will see in the next slides, we are, our strategy is citywide and we align our efforts with character areas, and we are seeing results. By building citywide employment centers, we are doing a couple of things. One, we are building a connected community. It's not just about roads. It's about connecting our community. And that's a very important part that Adina touched on. It also covers several modalities of transportation, as you heard a moment ago with Adina's presentation. Second, with employment centers, we keep Peoria's citizens working in Peoria. Having head-of-household jobs in key citywide employment centers reduces commute times and provides more time to enjoy the family and enjoy Peoria's high quality of life. That was interesting. So go back. So Mayor and council, just real briefly, the map up there shows some of the activity we're seeing citywide. So we're not seeing it just in one place. We're seeing it all across the city. Not sure why that goes away, but. So going forward, next up is we're going to develop and deploy a new strategic plan, eyeing for the fall of the year to present to the mayor and council, that clearly lays out these efforts and many more. And our efforts will continue to be concentrated on bringing world-class businesses and entertainment to Peoria and building our pipeline that is focused on taking world-class leads. We meet them to take them to world-class locates. They're here. And that's we talk about a world-class pipeline. Our second goal is to build a community of sustainable, high-quality jobs that keep, I think I just wrote that. I'm sorry. I got my notes backed up. I apologize. So what does it be to be, I'm sorry, our second goal is to build a community of sustainable, high-quality jobs that keep Peoria's citizens working in Peoria. So what does it mean to be sustainable? So sustainability is so much more than environmental. It includes economic and social as well. And surprisingly to some, economic sustainability is often the driver of social and environmental. Providing high-quality jobs are sustainable, resilient to economic turn downs, downturns, and providing those jobs within Peoria delivers on a key sustainability driver identified by the mayor and city council. So citywide results. So we have some good stuff here. On the previous slide, we discussed on the building of citywide employment centers. Accordingly, mayor and council, we are seeing results citywide. As you know, the nature of economic development more than often necessitates confidentiality with our private sector partners during the recruitment process. That said, we are pleased to report that since we have developed and deployed this targeted strategy, it has resulted in a world-class prospect pipeline of over $600 million in CapEx and nearly 2,300 jobs. What does that mean? That's what we have in the pipeline. That's right now. And I will tell you, our team has not fully populated that so far. So things are looking good. And again, that pipeline spans the length, the length of Peoria, where we're seeing strong interest in multiple character areas. In P83, for example, where we seek to build a financial, entertainment, education, and innovation corridor, we have strong prospects that will be catalyzed by stadium points, a mixed-use development with Class A office space, new urbanist residential, full-service hotels, signature dining, entertainment and education, as well as community space with multimodal connectivity. In Park West, we are seeing signature retail and dining being led by five new chef-driven restaurants. And in Vestancia at Commercial Core, we are seeing very strong prospects in high-tech advanced manufacturing. Next is global job, job attraction strategy. So our C2B job attraction strategy is both global and local, so hence the global acronym. To accomplish this, we have become very active in many partnerships with the Arizona Commerce Authority, GPEC, U.S. Commercial Service, Small Business SBDC, short Global Chamber, and of course, MAG, who was just here last council meeting demonstrating their excellence in data analytics. Our efforts are gaining traction, and we thank you for your support as being a pro-business council, a very strong pro-business council, something that I can tell you, Mayor, is absolutely critical as we move forward.
While Rick does that, I just, one thing I just wanted to echo with regard to what Rick was mentioning is, Rick and his team has really focused on building relationships with some of our regional partners. For example, with GPEC, who we work very closely with a prospect that we hope to report back to you very soon with their assistance. In addition, relationships with the Arizona Commerce Authority, which I know Rick can tell you about a little bit later, about some opportunities that we can really tap into those targeted markets that we are looking at. And they have offered to assist us as well as have monthly meetings with us, just Peoria-specific. So relationships that are really blossoming in that area. Just kudos to Rick and his team on that.
That's a great point, Jeff. We now have Arizona Commerce Authority coming and meeting us here in Peoria every month. We are at GPEC at least four times a month where they're here. So we're really proactively reaching out to those partners and getting them here. But going forward, we'll continue our efforts on recruiting equitable, sustainable, and resilient industries, again, to take leads to world-class, sustainable locates. Further, we will embrace sustainability as a business model, recognizing that today's populations increasing values, values the triple bottom line, profit, planet, and people with companies they work for invest in and buy in. Companies that embrace sustainability are strongly aligned with corporate values of future-ready industries, which takes me to our next slide. How convenient. So third, we have a goal to build a future-ready economy with trend-sighting industry clusters and cutting-edge innovation. So what does future-ready economy mean? See a graphic off to the right that shows some of the specific industries we're targeting. But a future-ready economy, or also commonly referred to as Industry 4.0, is a future of industrial production increasingly will be the mainstay of business. From autonomous vehicles and robots to IoT to cybersecurity to big data and fintech, our economy is rapidly evolving at a rate the world has never seen before. Leapfrog technologies are commonplace with millennials, don't know, who don't know what life is like without the internet or a smartphone. If we are going to be world-class and sustainable, we must be future-ready and at the forefront as a leader and not a follower. So some of the likewise with the traditional industry targets, we've identified specific industries. Some of those are denoted in the graphic on the screen. We've taken, we'd like to think that we've taken the strategy a step further and are very, being very proactive. So proactively identifying specific future-ready industries and have begun to deploy a targeted C2B outreach effort to attract and recruit future-ready companies, and we are working within targeted markets to bring them to Peoria. So it's not just the traditional industries we're going after. We're going after the future-ready because it's coming, and it's coming very quickly.
Rick, before you move on, what is the industrial internet of things?
So it's, it's internet of things. So what's a good example? If you have a smart refrigerator at home, it'll tell you when you're out of eggs, you're out of things. Similar in production, it'll let you know, you know, logistics, first in, first out, real-time delivery, JIT. That would be one example. So it's automating that process.
But taking existing products and, and making them internet savvy.
Internet savvy and just frankly, just automating the production process. So you'll know before you run out of a typical, particular raw material, for example, it's going to tell you before that happens, it's automatically doing it for you. But there's connectivity of IoT, just basically the connectivity. They call it the connected place. So it's more than just roads. It's connecting you by your smartphone, you know? It's, you probably get some interesting feeds, you know, and emails and stuff because they're tracking what you, you do. Amazon's the king of this, right? They know where you're, know where you're at and what you like to buy, and they provide you some suggestions. So similar, you know, councilmembers are laughing about it, so, you know, we all get those, like, where did I get this from? So, and these are evolving technologies, and they're moving very, very quickly. And I know Councilmember Finn knows quite a bit about this. So again, in deploying the targeted C2B, we're seeing results. Our unified branding effort is putting Peoria on the global map with approximately 30 to 40% of our prospect pipeline being now international. This may be due to the fact that the rise of future-ready industries built on innovation is a global phenomenon. We are working hard to position Peoria's leaders in this effort and again, working closely with ACA, GPEC, Westmark, MAG to significantly raise the profile of Peoria. Moving forward, we'll continue to forecast, attract, and pursue future-ready industry clusters, also known as Industry 4.0. So you just heard from Adina something about smart region tech and smart infrastructure. The future of smart regions and infrastructure will connect us as a community at a higher level and enhance quality of life. Smart region examples include things like, you know, probably heard a little bit about 5G cellular networks. Mobility is a service. So you've probably heard of software as a service, SaaS. Now we have mobility as a service. Where on your smartphone, you can connect to virtually any type of multimodality, whether you're making a plane flight or seeing where the bus is coming or pogo's coming. That's where we're going. IoT, fiber as a standard for shovel-ready sites. It's really critical that we're working with Chris Hockes and Adina on planning for this and being able to deliver this because this is what these industries want. If we're ready to go, we're saying, yeah, we've got that. So we will continue to work across departments and regional stakeholder groups to embrace and lead a smart region technology and infrastructure that is critical to the success of attracting world-class, sustainable, and future-ready companies. So the last one I have is, I suspect there's one council member that's going to like one of the words up there, align education institutions with future-ready industry. We will identify and embrace specific educational institutions and programs that will support the unique needs of future-ready industries. As you know, we have a partnership for entrepreneurship and innovation with the most innovative university in the nation, ASU. And you're also aware of Huntington University's recent award as the second best in the nation for media arts universities. What may might not know is the skills of Huntington University grads are applicable to a whole range of industries, especially future-ready. Soon Huntington will be launching their occupational therapy program right here in Peoria. But our team is also actively, actively recruiting higher education entities that align with the skill set and needs of Industry 4.0. One of those universities is the University of Advanced Technology, currently located in Tempe. They have accredited programs. They've been around for 35 years. And what their degrees are, their four-year accredited degrees perfectly align with future-ready industry. And we started recruiting them about six months ago. So it may start off with a virtual office. We'll try to get them into a brick-and-mortar office as we move forward because that is something that is really, really attractive to industry. Okay. Mayor and council? About six, six months ago, I think I sat with all of you and just talked about your thoughts on economic developments. And what we try to do is replicate that direction into an actionable strategy that is ROI-driven. So my thoughts right now is, are we, are we on the right track? Questions, thoughts, ideas, changes? We'd like to hear your feedback.
Councilmember Patena?
Thank you, Mayor. Rick, I know you have a challenging job. The competition out there is tough. Not only are you competing against other cities in our own state, but you're competing against other states like California and New York and Georgia and Texas for, for business. My question to you is, and I, and I know that you've hit the ground running and you're headed in the right direction. My question to you is, when you meet with a CEO or a CFO of a company, what's your tagline? I know Peoria has received a lot of awards over the years. What do you tell these CEOs and CFOs about Peoria right out of the chute that's going to pique their interest?
Mayor and councilmember, well, it's a couple of things. I will tell you, one of the things I do before a tagline is I put the Peoria Magazine out that the Gen Science Group puts together because I lead honestly by quality of life. We talk about workforce, 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 affordability, availability, and match with skill sets. But I'll tell you what resonates the most is that quality of life. And those pictures, you know, I don't have to say anything. Those pictures really do a great job. And so I would say those are the top four. I do, and I'm not saying this because I'm in front of you. I do talk quite a bit about having a very pro-business, united council that really, really wants high-quality job, high-quality business in the city of Peoria. That actually is a big deal. It's a big deal. Education is always is a thing to hit because if you are a CEO and you're looking to expand your business or put them here, you typically are highly educated yourself. You want high education for your kids who may be in kindergarten or they may be in college. But you, you value education. You're going to value education of the employees. You're going to ask to relocate and, and lead a team in our community. That's a very, very important thing. So that's educational piece is a really important thing. So we have about 16 different things that we hit, but those I'd say were probably the top five.
Councilmember Finn?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick comment. It's a great presentation. I feel like you're on the right track. And it's interesting to see all of the, the technology issues associated with this because a lot of people think it's just a matter of giving somebody a tax break to get them to come here, and that's not the case. There's so much more to this, and I appreciate the presentation. And I did want to reiterate what you said, which I thought was great, is we are a pro-business council. We're very united, and I'm, I'm thrilled that that helps you in your, in your endeavors out there. And yeah, so great presentation. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Presentation, can you go back a couple of slides where you had the map? There you go. So I had the opportunity last week to go to DC, and one of the seminars that I went to touched bases heavily on the opportunity zones. I know we talked briefly about that in our last council meeting. Can you kind of elaborate a little bit about how, when, in your discussions with businesses, are they, are they starting to recognize this federal government plan, program? And is that something that we're going to be building on more?
Mayor, Councilmember Edwards, in the city of Peoria, the opportunity zone that's identified is about two square miles, just, you know, north of here. So our, it's going to be a bad play on words here, but our opportunity for opportunity zones is somewhat limited at this point in time. So identified by the state, submitted a number of census tract type things, went to the federal government, they came back. Peoria only came up with about two square miles. Most of that is already developed. So it's, it's a challenge for us to do that. So I just presented to the Economic Development Advisory Board last week on this specific issue. So opportunity zones are not, it's not that complicated. They're useful. We may have a couple of opportunities to use them, but it's just, right now, it's limited. So that being said, we're keeping an eye on it because those census tracts could change. The opportunity zone legislation is evolving. Nobody really knows exactly if and when they're going to make the changes, if any. So we just, we're keeping an eye on it. So when you look at the map there, really the only spot that there is an opportunity zone is right here in the Old Town area, just north of here. Off the top of my head, I can't, I don't know the exact boundaries, but it's already developed. Yeah.
You see, I mean, because like I said, I listened to a lot of cities and, and the common theme was, is that... theme was, is that obviously this is in its infancy stage, you know, from the federal government, but they, all the cities that I spoke to that were really interested in learning or seeing it expand, do you see somewhere down the line that the federal government, if this program is successful, expanding it to bigger opportunity zones in like North Peoria to attract businesses?
I think there's a relatively good chance of it expanding, but I think that's the basic, the basic tenets of keeping it as a census tract for, you know, lower income levels is probably going to stay. So it's a bit flawed because I'll tell you that ASU along the Tempe Town Lake has got all kinds of opportunity zone, like how did that happen? You have students. So pretty clever on their part, but you know, it is, there is some flawed methodology. So my guess is they'll revisit that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Member Hunt, did you have anything?
I had a question and then a comment. Our local Chamber of Commerce, what part do they play and how valuable are they, I guess? How do you use them and what you do?
So our interaction with them is part of the outreach effort, so we are reaching out to them on a regular basis. Interestingly enough, I just mentioned Economic Development Advisory Board, we have just, as of Thursday, we now, they are now ambassadors for the city. So part of their role is to help us reach out to the Chamber of Commerce, the special events we have going on, the Million Cups, I think is tomorrow night. So we are reaching out with them, we talk with Guy. They're going to have to move here fairly soon, so we're working with them. So our interaction, we don't use them, we work with them. I think our interaction is pretty solid and we're looking for other opportunities for people to help us because I think it's really important to not forget the businesses that are already here.
Thank you. The main thing I took away that I just put stars around is our sustainable quality jobs. I think 2008, when the downturn hit, everybody was like, what? Where did this come from? And we weren't prepared. We, I think Peoria handled it better than most cities at the time, but I really liked what you said about creating jobs that will withstand another downturn. If you listen to the pundits on the radio at all, they're predicting that things are so good right now, what goes up has to come down. And so I just really appreciate that because we need to, I'm not an alarmist at all, but if it comes, we certainly want to be ready for it. And it looks like that's what you're going for is jobs that will withstand, to help a city withstand that should it come again.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Member Leon.
Go back to the first page. One more. Yeah. I think, I think that this is going to be a good fit for the community. I've talked to a lot of people who's excited about it, they want to see this thing go and they want it to go fast. And I told them it's not going to go fast because we had to, we have to prepare everything before we can go forward with this. So I feel that this is going to be something that the community is going to enjoy and the community is going to, which one is going to be about our transportation and it's going to be just great for the community. And if we can get them jobs, that's even better. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think economic development is one of the most critical things that we can do because it not only puts our employer, our residents to work close to home where they can be, you know, close to their family and go to their kids' ballgames and those kinds of things, but it also makes us a complete city. In other words, you know, we're staying close to home, which means we are feeding the restaurants that are here instead of the ones that are in Phoenix and, you know, every other city, Chandler. And keeping those tax dollars here and these businesses contribute to their environment. They contribute to the schools and the Little League teams and they build things in the parks and arts and all kinds of contributions that come from the businesses that reside in a community. So it's far-reaching. Economic development is a big deal for us and it is a change from being a bedroom community to being a complete city, a place where our residents can stay all day long, including the weekends. And so, you know, this is, this is a very, very important component of who we are becoming in the city of Peoria. So I thank you for all of your work on it and I think you're on the right track and it's exciting to see what's going to be right around the corner.
Just cross.
Thank you.
So up next is arts, culture and recreation. Before I turn it over to John Sefton, it has been said that the arts empower, they give us a voice to the voiceless. The arts help transform American communities and can lead to a better child, a better town, a better nation, and certainly a better world. And it was Robert Lynch of the Americans for the Arts who said that. So as a council, when you lead us to invest in the arts, culture and recreation, you lead us in making a better community. John?
Thank you, Jay, and good evening to Mayor and Council. As we think on the topics of arts, culture and recreation, this is one goal area that is significantly defined by the individual. We all see arts differently. We all define and derive our culture from different perspectives and we all play, recreate or recreate in different ways as well. As a grand vision, our team took an overarching look at how the arts, culture and recreation influence the livability of Peoria and enhance our collective human experience. The My Peoria, where I create, interact and experience life at its very best. As you'll see over the next few slides, we'll tackle each of the theme areas, identifying what we see as Peoria's true assets, unique in our way. For the arts vision, Peoria is a place where the arts in all its forms are celebrated and appreciated and supported and that the arts are relevant to the livability of our community and most importantly, accessible to all. Our resources and assets are robust and what better way than to use a word cloud to capture the ideas of our team of thought leaders? Here's a quick look at the many of Peoria's arts assets. Being visionary in the arts world is truly drawing the connections between the built environment, the activities we participate in, and the feelings or emotions we experience when consuming the arts. In just the last couple of months, your commitment to public art has come to life with the reveal of Peoria's iconic and fifty-foot-tall blooming spire. Artist Jeff Ziski's latest creation that was inspired by Peoria's desert plant life. I do think it's important to share that as we finished the dedication just a couple of weeks ago, Jeff and his wife stopped me to talk about the art selection process. That was quite long. He was impressed with where and how Mary Lou and the Arts and Special Events Team engaged that process and how our public engagement efforts are really distinguishing Peoria from other municipal public art programs. And of course, we can't forget how Adina Lund and her team of engineers, or I might call them Imagine-ers, how they've helped to execute on the construction and the installation of such an impressive and massive piece. It was just a short while ago that you entered into an agreement with Theater Works to be the managing partner at the Peoria Center for the Performing Arts. This partnership is one that leverages the creative talents of their staff and volunteers while highlighting the Performing Arts Center's assets and Peoria's Old Town charm. Currently under production are two new temporary public art installations to be placed at both the Peoria Main Library and the Sunrise Mountain Library. Influx is a great partnership for our temporary arts installation. Now, as you know, Mary Lou isn't stopping, you've seen her energy. Moving forward, you're going to see that the arts vision comes to reality with a large-scale installation visible from the highly-traveled Lake Pleasant Parkway or even visited on foot or at the human scale by visitors to the Deer Village Park. The barrel cactus that you see here, really more colorful than even Kevin Burke's bowtie. We're going to continue to grow the music on the plaza events, whether it's guitar strumming crooners, trumpet-driven jazz masters or traveling families full of songwriting geniuses, Peoria is offering celebrations of artistry that is free and accessible to all. The Annual Arts Action Plan, it's a document used to accentuate the important projects, programs and initiatives that the arts, that the staff and Special Events Team, if you will, participate and develop that strong collaboration with the Arts Commission and a wide array of partners throughout the community. These partners include the Peoria Unified School District, West Valley Art Museum, Arizona Broadway Theater, WHAM, and over a dozen more in just this single year. Now, thinking on culture. Peoria is a place rich in cultural diversity in that we, our vision is that we celebrate our heritage and uniqueness of our diverse culture. These are a few of those assets that we know from programs to facilities that really make that vision a reality. Activating on that vision, we've done a lot through your support in establishing those celebrations. Significant events like the Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration, featuring a unity walk and educational concert, the Somos Peoria Event, or the Cinco de Mayo Celebration at our Main Library, where we've even added a Spanish collection at the Main Library. Your commitment to those who have served is really distinguished with the recent Veterans' Memorial Improvements. And Chris Hockes will talk a little more in detail on the historical and the archaeological aspects of our city's culture. A nice night shot of our Veterans' Memorial. Now, dancing into the future, we'll be promoting our Old Town New Vibe in a mix of exciting promotions, activities and events. You've noticed the colorful planners, the musical park instruments, the Driftwood Coffee Shop, Streetscapes. We've really had some good discussions with you on the importance of having these unique elements and you're seeing them to come to fruition now. And we've spoken a lot about place-making and will evolve those concepts into experience creating, essentially activating the spaces in Old Town for folks to enjoy in their very own ways. Now, Rick mentioned world-class. Now, I would certainly boast to say that we're offering world-class recreational amenities with our Peoria Sports Complex, the community parks, Rio Vista Rec Center, our neighborhood parks, the New River Trail and our mountain trail system, and the myriad of activities and partnerships that make Peoria simply a great place to be. Our vision is that Peoria is a place where everyone has the opportunity to be healthy and to play and to recreate themselves every day. And of course, another great word cloud. Mayor and Council, your support and direction in the recreation arena is notable. Peoria is often recognized as leaders in our industry and I for one, am very proud of that. Studies show over and over that being close to open space and at park-like facilities or nature makes for a healthier people and therefore a healthier community. Our investment in these areas reap substantial rewards for our entire city. So currently, we're focusing on the New River Pathway. This continues north, now beyond Williams, and I think Councilmember Edwards has been spotted out there frequently, even with construction going on. He had a hard hat on and was walking diligently. Now, there's great work above Williams Road. Anyone can take a stroll or hop a bike for nearly eleven miles without conflict from roadway traffic. While it's right down the middle of our busiest part of the city, it is a connection to nature that really makes you feel miles away. The system connects regionally to the south and to the east is one of the most important investments that we can make. Paloma Community Park, yes, it will break ground very soon, featuring lit ball fields and sports fields, mountain trails, a fishing pond, adventure play and inclusive design playgrounds, oh, and pickleball and off-leash dog zone areas. Our Peoria Sports Complex enhancements, these improvements have truly hit a hard home run, pardon the pun. From the ball yard, the shipyard areas to the colonnade and the terrace event spaces, they've improved the year-round experience at our stadium. Moving forward, we envision another excellent neighborhood park with the Meadows Neighborhood Park under design and which will take place very soon. To best meet the needs of the community and the complement, and then complement the assets to the surrounding area, we'll engage a series of stakeholder meetings and open houses for the public in order to reach a truly designed, a truly park-designed to meet our community needs. We've had amazing success with our recent playground improvements projects at Apache and West Green and Sunny Slope and Sundance Parks where the kids are actually going through a review of the play features and making the voting for that final project. We're very proud of that public access or public outreach. And as I'll mention again, the New River Pathway all the way to Happy Valley, as I mentioned earlier, will continue on that construction. You'll see these phase projects in the upcoming budget discussions. We've heard for years from the cycling community about how important this connection will be for them. They've got to get in their miles. So this connection will be really important and again, getting them off of the streets and onto that traffic-free New River Trail System is a key asset. And finally, our programs and partnerships are the connections to people, the people that benefit from these park-centric investments, whether it's youth and adult sports, the spring training experience, exercise and wellness opportunities, swim lessons or swim team, our partnerships will continue to be a strong strategy. Our partnerships, like those with Sidewinder Little League, one of the strongest in the valley, once we build Paloma Community Park, the coaches and the parents will find great value in having those amenities just a slight bit closer to home. Several insurance companies are now affording their clients gym access to places like Rio Vista, offering both financial incentive but health benefit incentives as well. And our membership and support at the Central Arizona Conservation Alliance, it connects us to a technical resource as we build our programs around our open space, nature settings and conservation-related activities. And also of note, we'll be partnering with facilities where we might not have facilities, facilities like Sebola Vista Resort up north or HOAs that may have amenities where we might be able to provide the programming as they provide the space. So, Mayor and Council, My Peoria, where I create, interact, experience life at its very best. When we think about arts, culture and recreation, are we influencing the livability in the right ways and are you proud of it?
I'm going to start this direction, this way. Councilmember Leonie, did you have anything?
Think that we should move on this. Looking forward to seeing it before anything happens to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Stay healthy.
Well, this, all of this really excites me. I think this gets to the heart of our livability, which as whoever sat there before you, Rick, said, sorry, I looked and he wasn't there. I was momentarily confused. As Rick said, livability really is what makes people happy. Once they've decided to make Peoria their home, it's the livability aspect and while certainly, that's not to denigrate any of our areas, transportation or anything, but this is where the kids go play ball. I still have those memories of my kids walking around the corner to the ballpark at the school. I could just go on and on. This is just amazing and wow, I'm tired just watching you guys. Mary Lou, you are the Energizer Bunny. I don't know how you do it. It's just, I can't say enough. It's just, everything's amazing. So much is happening in my neck of the woods down here in Old Town with the music in the park or on the sidewalk, wherever it is. We're having street painting, intersection painting coming up. It's just, this really is the place to live and to recreate or to recreate who you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, one hundred percent in favor of all the stuff that you're doing. It just amazes me, the energy that you have, that Mary Lou has, I mean, you guys just knocking out of the park. Just this morning, I was out at the Deer Valley Trailhead and saw bikers and joggers and kids with their parents walking down the trails and just using all of the amenities that we had. And two weeks ago, I was out at that trailhead that you talked about and a constituent, not of Peoria but of another city, stopped me to make a comment that they wish they had the amenities that we have in Peoria and their city. So kudos to you and your staff, we are definitely hitting a mark here.
Thank you. Councilmember Finn.
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Edwards. I think we do a fantastic job on the recreation, the livability. I am certainly not the visionary and arts and culture, it's just not in my, not in my nature. So I know I like the things that I see and I have the utmost respect and appreciation for those of you that do and are able to provide that because I do appreciate it once it's there. I just, I'm not the visionary person that can see that. And Kevin Perk, you keep rocking that bowtie, my friend, okay? Love it. Rocking it. That's all I am.
Councilmember Patana.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'm certainly not an art critic, John, but I enjoy art and what I enjoy about Peoria art is it's the diversity in it. You know, the blooming, the blooming You know, the blooming spear is different than the family out here in front, different from the tree that you have out in your park. And so, a lot of people can enjoy the art we have. I have a quick story about this family. We had a citizen who was so upset when that family piece of art was installed in Peoria, he chained himself to it with a lock. And so everybody's wondering, what are we going to do with this guy? He's chained to that piece of art. And so the police came over and said, "In two hours, it's going to be 114 degrees outside. Just let him alone." And two hours later, he unchained himself and he left. So, I mean, I thought that was a cool thing. You know, it wasn't that long ago when this council actually financially supported Theater Works. It was not a unanimous vote, but thankfully, we had enough votes to pass and we supported them financially. Otherwise, they were at risk of shutting their doors. And if you look where Theater Works has gone in the last few years, they have so much different type of entertainment going on. Their youth programs are amazing, and they even have classes for special needs kids, which is really, really, truly, truly amazing. We also have the entertainment that we have in the park, at Sona Park. And what I always talk about is affordability. And it's free. I mean, you can come out to that park. A family can come out, listen to music, go to the food trucks if they choose or not, and just have a nice evening of entertainment with their family. And I've always been a big believer in making those kinds of things affordable. And I think you do a great job doing that. So keep up the good work. You're on the right track.
And I couldn't agree more. You know, this is just a really important part of what I think our city should be doing for our residents, showing off the character of who we are as Peoria residents. And that's what makes us different from every other city and the residents in every other location. And you calling it "my Peoria" is so on target that I just can't believe we haven't been calling it that all along. "My Peoria," that's exactly what art and culture and recreation does. It defines who we are individually. And that's what makes Peoria so unique and so special and so distinctive. So, good job. I think you're on target. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Up next is Healthy Neighborhoods, and we're going to hear from Chris Howlett in a second. But neighborhoods are more than just a network of streets and rows of homes. Healthy neighborhoods support residents' physical, social, and emotional well-being. As we work hard to strengthen our brand as a city, I think it's helpful to remember that people tend to identify with their local neighborhood before they do with their large community. And with that, Chris is going to take us through.
Thank you, Jay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So what makes a neighborhood healthy and livable? That's the question we asked ourselves. A multi-department, cross-functional team, which by the way, can't think enough, they're rock stars. They really did a lot to help get us ready for this presentation today. We also asked that at a Peoria High School Open House. And what we found is that healthy neighborhoods are ones that already naturally and organically touch upon one or more of these basic strategies. They engage and interact with each other and celebrate any number of their neighborhood's positive attributes, from their cultural characteristics to their sense of pride and cleanliness, as well as their willingness to access needed resources that allows them to achieve and maintain safe, healthy neighborhoods, both in the physical and the human sense. In an effort to meet Council's priority goal of fostering healthy neighborhoods throughout Peoria, we will continue to engage our neighborhoods, learn and understand the unique cultures within them and the distinctive characteristics that define who they are and what is important to them, then work with them to encourage higher-level participation in honoring what they already have and in developing what they are lacking. One highly successful way we do this is through our Neighborhood-Centric Park Fest, which have proven to be very successful at engaging and educating our neighborhoods. While not all Peoria neighborhoods are the same, moving forward, expect to see some flexibility in what these Neighborhood-Centric events look like. We will continue to nurture the many strong partnerships we have that extend our reach, such as with Peoria Unified School District, the American Civil Liberties Union, and our newly enhanced partnership with police and community through our revamped monthly UCAN meetings, as well as with our growing number of nonprofits we network with. Moving forward, we believe that we can do even more to help engage neighborhoods and help them celebrate their unique characteristics through new and exciting programs, such as POW, Block Party on Wheels. Now, the concept is we bring engagement opportunities to our residents with a preloaded activity trailer or party in a box. Now, contrary to thinking outside of the box, this will definitely help kickstart a neighborhood engagement involvement efforts. We also want to further enhance public engagement through the creation of Public Engagement Task Force. This will help us to better know what our community is thinking and needing. The task force can help us engage and communicate with neighborhoods, gather feedback on our programming, and help guide decision-making based on broader community perspectives. We believe another key factor to a healthy neighborhood is how safe people feel, right? Finding ways to improve and promote neighborhood safety and its relative cleanliness, which is so often is aligned with the neighborhood's real or perceived safety, can be accomplished in a number of ways. In fact, for example, resident concerns about property maintenance violations and feedback on neighborhood standards has prompted a Council Subcommittee on Code Enforcement, co-chaired by these two over here. This committee will soon bring forward recommendations on suggested code enforcement adjustments, modernization, and customization that will help us better meet the needs of our residents and the desire to feel safe. Likewise, as Adina mentioned earlier, enhanced funding to refresh our parks, rightaways, and retention basins was approved last year's budget. The city has invested an additional 1.3 million over a two-year period towards these aesthetic enhancements, with more coming to you later tonight on Council Agenda. And we're already seeing positive results of these projects in the community. Most notably, Adina could attest to, and Councilmember Finn requests for more. So going forward, and in partnership with planning and police departments, we will focus our efforts on improving the safety within our neighborhoods by utilizing healthy design principles. Now, whereas the city already has required SEP TED elements on new private developments, we hope to incorporate these and add some same principles to already built environments to create safer communities. Primarily, the team would work with the neighborhoods to identify crime prevention opportunities through environmental design, focusing mainly on adding strategic enhanced lighting and landscaping that will minimize or eliminate criminal opportunities. Similarly, Mayor, we are looking at data-driven opportunities to increase signage and lighting as a way to assist residents and visitors in safely finding their way to their Peoria destinations. Lastly, we know that the communication and how our residents access and receive information is so important to the success of anything we do. This is a healthy principle in neighborhood engagement and can be done in a number of ways. While protecting personal information and legal due process, we will be looking into the ability to provide restricted public access to code enforcement cases through our CitizenServe software, which will allow residents to find out status on current open cases to start. Now, immediate sign of a healthy community is known as soon as you drive into it, right? It's definitely apparent when they have a sense of pride in their neighborhood. Properties are well-maintained. There are block watch signs. Families are playing in their yards and in the streets and in their parks. And Peoria continues to help foster these types of neighborhoods through programs such as Neighborhood Pride and the recently revised Neighborhood Grant Program, which together continue to revitalize and create this sense of community pride and bring neighbors together for a common purpose. These small investments, along with access to grants and volunteers, can reap positive impacts when everyone comes together at these neighborhood events. As we move forward, we want to build off this by bringing services to the neighborhood, making City Hall services more accessible through pop-up public outreach, a mobile city services concept that collaboratively engages residents through sidewalk conversations. Public meetings are taken to the neighborhood. This concept is about bringing mobile access to our residents. Another unique opportunity that we're looking at is the concept of time banks, a community service bartering concept designed to increase individual and community well-being. Bartering takes place through time banking exchanges where members give and receive services between each other or through group and community activities and projects. Now, members can include individuals, groups, or organizations. And basically, we would help facilitate hour-for-hour exchanges for services or credits by hosting the website for time bankers. Mayor and Council, both of these are exciting concepts that we can be used to engage with our communities on any number of city or community-based topics, issues, or services. From library services to social services to livability initiatives. Again, all while providing neighbors an opportunity to engage with one another around their common interests. We're really looking forward to both of these prospects. We think we're going to have positive results out in the community. Lastly, we believe, in fact, we know that our city has plenty to offer families and the working professional. Many households will at some point find themselves needing some level of human or social resources. Like or not, we'll all be facing aging in place or other issues impacting our fellow Peoria residents. It is so important as a city that we're able to provide access to those needed resources. You all should be very proud knowing that our community center has been an anchor for Peoria in providing some basic need services. And thanks to this council, and especially Councilmember Patena's leadership, we will provide access to even more services non-profit providers with a grand opening June 27th of our expansion. Should have already received invites and a calendar holds for that earlier this week. So it's just another example of how, in many ways, we're trying to meet Peoria's human service needs. And although our nutritional meal program at the community center has been longtime provided to those most in need, and while it provided approximately 37,000 congregant home-delivered and weekend meals last fiscal year, these numbers have been trending up to meet the increased demand, up 8% alone last year. And with the Community Resource Center expanding to include more nonprofit and services, we are preparing the nutritional meal programs to continue to grow to meet the demands expected from the increased population visiting the center. Now, moving forward, planning is such a necessity and so important to the livability of a city, and we are eager to begin developing our next five-year consolidated plan for HUD. This required federal funds plan will provide us a critical opportunity to develop a blueprint for success on how we will address Peoria's new and current community development and social service needs. The CON Plan will be done in harmony with the City's General Plan Amendment in partnership with the Planning Department. And together, the plans will give us the information needed to address the current human and social service needs as we determine our federal funds programming allocations. Emphasis will likely surround most notable needs impacting the region and challenges we are currently facing. Specifically, in the areas of homelessness, we look to provide enhanced efforts with our newly assembled multi-department homeless team, which includes police, fire, transit, and neighborhood and human services departments. This year's budget request includes increased Peoria funding along with regional funding requests we encouraged during meetings with West Valley Human Services Collaborative and MAG. In particular, our funding requests include a West Valley Regional Cooperative Outreach Navigator, which will assist Peoria Police, in concert with neighboring cities, to provide navigated services for homelessness, as well as funding for reserved overnight shelter bed space for those Peoria residents experiencing homelessness. Both requests allow for more efficient and effective delivery of homeless and police services. Collectively, we believe these vision statements and initiatives will help make Peoria neighborhoods even healthier. We also feel this provides your neighborhood and human services department with a springboard as we prepare for upcoming council update on our new department's mission, vision, and strategic plan in May. So, Mayor and Council, as representatives of and Peoria residents yourselves, are we missing anything from your vision of a healthy Peoria neighborhood? Are we close? Are we in the neighborhood?
All right. Councilmember Leonie, do you want to start? Do you have anything?
Yeah, I just want to say that Peoria is a great place to live. I've been here since 1987, and I enjoy every day of it. And we have a lot of entertainment going on. We have a lot of recreation centers going on. So I would hope that the people of Peoria would make it better than it is. But you can't make it any better. But I think you can help out on it. And hopefully that we could work with the people in Peoria and make it a better city than it is. Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt?
Wow, you have some great ideas here.
The team does.
The team.
The community does.
You are presenting.
You probably do.
The Block Party on Wheels, the, what was the other one that was on wheels? The pop-up, public outreach. You know, WHAM's been bringing art on wheels to our park fests for a couple of years now. And this just is enhancing that, and maybe they can be used in collaboration. Gosh, there are just so many ideas new to us. I don't know if they're new ideas or not, but they're certainly new to us. And just what I've been asking for, except that I didn't know what to ask for, but I've presented the needs to you, and these just seem like they're going to meet so many of those. You did forget to brag about, and I think it comes under your heading there, of the Free Little Libraries. Is somebody else going to brag about those?
Yes, yes. We had a picture in there originally, but it fell on the floor of the editing.
Okay, well, very proud of that, and definitely a community program that incorporates literacy and the arts and so many different things, which is all, again, the livability. It's so many aspects. As Mike confessed, you know, the arts aren't his thing. Okay, they're not for everybody, but there are so many other things we do. And recreation, not so much for me anymore. But there are a lot of people who, thousands of people, who use it and need it. So I think putting these together and really finding out what neighborhoods need and want. And I loved what you said about children playing in the front yards. And even, I don't mind kids playing in the streets if it's their neighborhood and they're kicking a ball. This just really, really excites me, and welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you could have left that picture out. You could have put the library in. But no, you had to put that picture in.
And I'm so sorry to see that he's homeless in that homeless vest.
I didn't want to say that, but, no, you're definitely hitting the mark. The Community Pride, your Neighborhood Pride programs, I go to as many as I possibly can. It's just amazing that when you're in a neighborhood, the people from outside the neighborhood come in and help. And if they can't help paint or rake, they bring food for the volunteers. And it really is a sense of community. And you guys do a phenomenal job of that. So I just want to thank you on that. And the idea of pop-up meetings and time banking, those are right on the mark. I mean, if they can't get here, we need to take it to them. I mean, if they can't get here, we need to take it to them, and so that's a phenomenal idea. I hope to see more, more coming on that soon. That's all I have, Mayor.
I echo all of their comments. I won't waste everyone's time saying the exact same things, but I did have one question. The neighborhood wayfinding, can you tell me just a little bit more about what that piece was? I saw pictures of kind of the neighborhood signage. Is there anything else to the neighborhood wayfinding with that?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Finn, actually, part of it will be involving you all as well as neighborhoods. I mean, we definitely need it in regards to events and some of the downtown and placemaking we do, but it can be even at a residential level with sign toppers or anything that they got going on, whether it's temporary, if they're doing their own events, or if we're having a block party on wheels there and you want to direct it. So I think there'll be a wide spectrum of wayfinding opportunities for us to look into and bring back to council. Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Councilmember Patena?
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, listening to your presentation, I kind of feel cheated as a child. I, I...
You'd be our big fellow.
Thank you. You know, my neighborhood never had any of this stuff. I mean, I had fun growing up, but it never had any of this stuff. I think how much more my neighborhood could have been had we done any of this. We didn't have, we never did anything to celebrate diversity, never had a block party in my neighborhood. I had one park in the entire city. The other parks were asphalt-covered playgrounds that were at the schoolyard. If you fell, you hit your head on asphalt, and you cried all the way home. We didn't have any code enforcement department. You either lived with the problem, or you confronted your neighbor and to see if you could get it taken care of. And certainly, our older communities, we never had a neighborhood pride program, and so the older the houses got, the more they deteriorated and the lower the housing values that they dropped. So it's, I think what the city is doing is it's empowering the neighborhoods and empowering the people who live in those neighborhoods. I believe that the neighborhoods, good neighborhoods are the backbone of any city, and I think that Peoria is doing all it can to improve the neighborhoods. So I'm really happy with where you're headed with this. That's all I have.
Thank you. I feel very sorry for you and for your upbringing. I'm glad you didn't chain yourself to anything. You know, neighborhoods, getting all the way down to the neighborhood aspect of our city is something that we haven't done in the past. We've done neighborhood pride, but this is a completely different realm, and I do want to thank our city manager, because when we interviewed him, he said that this was a real, a pet project of his, getting down to the neighborhoods, and I'm so excited to see that you meant what you said and that you said what you meant. And now here we have Chris right before us, who is an expert in this area, and obviously bringing lots of great ideas and lots of things that are going to make each one of our neighborhoods shine in their own right, in their own uniqueness. And so it's incredible. It's a great, big, huge step for the city of Peoria, so thanks to both of you. I'm here for you.
Thank you. I'll yield to the bowtie.
So with just two topics left, we're going to try and pick up the pace a little bit. Our next initiative is superior public services. As a local government, we are in the service industry, and over time, Peoria has built and maintained a strong culture of responsiveness and excellent customer service. Beyond awards and high customer satisfaction ratings, it's the pride and dedication of our employees that tell us that we have our eye on the ball. Of the six initiatives, this is perhaps the broadest and most comprehensive, and our Public Works Director, Kevin Burke, took this on and is excited to show you what they've been working on.
Thank you. And I'll try to keep us moving right along and not distract you with any bowties or word clouds, and we'll keep it going. There you go. So, Mayor and Council, we focused thus far on what we deliver that makes us a livable community. I'm now going to focus on how we deliver our service that makes us a community of distinction. We believe that when Peoria delivers services in a responsive, reliable, safe, compassionate, and strategic manner, we will be known for superior public services. The first element to superior public services is responsiveness to citizens' demands for services. Therefore, every day, Peoria provides responsive services that are timely, available, and accessible. Responsiveness is perhaps most seen with a call to dispatch and the immediate response of a public safety service. That is clearly responsive, but taking it, oh, wrong, but taking it to the next level, safety to the next level, Peoria's Police Department recently realigned its beats and schedules consistent with the Matrix Study to more efficiently deploy its patrol officers and position the department to be responsive to growth. Further, what used to be simply fire suppression services now includes a full array of medical services as well as a number of specialty services, such as Lake Pleasant Boat Rescue, Technical Rescue Teams, and the Hazardous Materials Unit. Outside of public safety, responsiveness also takes the form of timely and accessible public records, which are now more readily available through our automated records request system developed by the City Clerk and IT Office. Advancing this vision, Finance has online service solutions in the works that will make answering your customer service questions or paying your utility bills even more convenient. They're developing one-stop, online payment systems that allow residents to pay any bill from as convenient as your cellphone application. Further, we are increasing responsiveness by decreasing reliance on private ambulance services, incrementally installing Peoria Fire Medical to provide services throughout the city. Keeping us moving, not only must superior services be responsive, it must be reliable. Therefore, dedicated, well-trained, and well-equipped staff provide Peoria residents with reliable services. Reliable services includes never missing a week of trash and recycle collection, but what makes us superior is the free go-backs that occur when people forget to put their garbage cans out. What makes us distinct and demonstrates dedicated and well-trained staff is the fact that Peoria's services are accredited wherever available. We are accredited in police, we're accredited in fire, parks and recreation, we're accredited in water services, we're accredited in public works. Again, this is what makes us a community of. Now, in order to form a more perfect union or municipality, the city is bringing on an internal auditor that not only provides additional financial reliability, but the position will audit best practices and performances across the organization. Lastly, Peoria provides superior public service by constantly developing its talent pipeline. This year, we'll see a new management intern program to complement things such as our Peoria High School internship program, where we are seeing local talent receive on-the-job training and experiences in city departments, such as just this last fall, we had a student from Centennial High School who interned in our fleet maintenance department to learn to be a future fleet opportunity for us. We will also be bringing in talent through Wesmech to work in our dispatch center and our Water Services Department, not to mention programs like the Police Explorers and the Youth Police Academy, that are all helping us to develop talent for our hard-to-fill departments. Another foundation of superior public services is the feeling of safety. Peoria's services focus upon community safety. Despite changing circumstances and a growing population, Peoria continues to be one of the lowest crime rate cities in the greater Phoenix metro area. And in the last year, Peoria received the highest insurance rating possible, a Class I ISO rating, due to robust fire prevention programs. Now, this is an incredible distinction. Once again, Peoria is one of only eight departments in the state that has achieved this rating. Now, recognize there's 91 municipalities in the state, so eight departments, we are certainly in the realm of distinction, and it is affording Peoria residents some of the lowest insurance rates available. Now, in order to move this vision of safety forward, the new police chief is in the middle of implementing a series of measures to enhance community policing strategies, such as a renewed predictive policing program, the bike unit redeployment, HOA academies, the misdemeanor repeat offender program, also known as M-Rope, and along with cooperative efforts with engineering and traffic engineers on safety around schools. In terms of next-level community safety, this is really looking ahead to expanding programs like public access to the defibrillator program, but it also includes practicing an active threat event exercise. Now, this is different than the tabletop exercises where we get all together and we walk through a scenario. This is where personnel and equipment are brought out and actually recreate the active threat and then train accordingly to that. That's in the works. Last, whoops. Lastly, in 2020, Medicare is changing rules on reimbursements for alternate transports to different locations besides the emergency room. So this is going to open up opportunities for transports to places like urgent care, community health centers, or behavioral health practices, which is a good way to our next segment, which is that perhaps what distinguishes Peoria most and symbolizes its superior public service is its compassion. Peoria delivers services in a caring, engaging, and ethical manner, reflecting our compassion for the people we serve. It is seen in the police established crisis intervention team for incidents involving mental health and homelessness, as well as the police department's quarterly homelessness outreach. Further, we see extensive employee charity and volunteer efforts year-round. Employees donate thousands of hours and dollars to Peoria causes with no direction from supervisors, from departments, or from the council, which is purely their own compassion and dedication to this community. But our compassion does not stop there. Moving forward, you will see a series of community service, or community conversations held by our Neighborhood Services Department on such critical service needs as suicide prevention, parenting, and domestic violence prevention. Additionally, Fire Medical will analyze and take the next steps in our community paramedicine pilot project. Lastly, Peoria is known for innovation and solution-oriented problem-solving through the use of technology and strategic planning. This can be seen recently as our Peoria Drought Contingency Plan is one of distinction in the valley and the state due to its strategic acquisition of diverse water portfolio assets and its robust water credits. This portfolio includes surface water rights from CAP, SRP, and tribal lands, as well as an aggressive recharge program that has reached five and a half years of water credits. Lastly, while the city also maintains 38 active groundwater, thus creating a very distinct resiliency that separates Peoria. Further, court has implemented a telephonic video court appearance that saves time and money for the police officers, the court employees, and even the defendants. And of course, with your leadership, Communication has launched a very strategic new branding initiative campaign called "Peoria is the Place." And we won't stop there. The constant look at the next right step to improve our services and use technology is, in a solution-oriented manner, can be seen in the upcoming acquisition of trash and recycling routing software. I know it sounds exciting. It will adapt to daily changes associated with driver attendance, vehicle breakdowns, and that allows us to reroute the remaining assets to most efficiently collect while also collecting information such as video evidence of recycling contamination. It's a very strong software out there. Further, the organization is really evolving towards real-time data access. What do we mean by that? This is the idea that you can access live data as it's happening, such as how much water are you consuming during the month, be able to go in and access that record. It's about seeing when that pogo bus is about to arrive at your stop. You'll be able to look on your phone and see where the bus is and how close it's getting to your particular stop. Or it's even, you know, keeping track of where the trash truck and how close it is to coming and picking up your trash, because we all know, you know, it comes at the exact same time every single week. So again, Peoria will continue to be innovative and strategic in our service delivery. Together, these five attributes of responsive, reliable, safe, compassionate, and strategic delivery provide superior public service to Peoria residents. So with that, we ask if we hit the mark and if this is lining up with your vision of superior service.
Wow. Okay. Councilmember Leonie, did you have anything?
You know, I think I should, we should let the constituents meet and talk about it. It's important to them, and it's important to us. So I'm looking forward to having a public meeting, like it says here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Well, I think you hit the mark every day. What, the service you provide does not get the public recognition unless the garbage truck doesn't show up, or yours is almost a reflexive negative thing. Otherwise, we just expect it, and to a certain level, we certainly appreciate it, because we would just be in a world of hurt if these things did not happen on a reliable basis. So I think you do provide, you and your crew certainly, provide superior public service. I, there's a reason why we get those awards. So thank you for what you do, and thank you for coming out to my street a couple weeks ago to look at my potholes, or my cracks.
Councilmember Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. I think you said it, service second to none. I mean, you guys do a phenomenal job, whether it's public safety or, you know, the trash in the sewer. You guys just do a phenomenal job. You guys are always on the mark, listening to residents, or you're saying, you know, trips that somebody forgot to put out their trash can, you guys, they pick up a phone, make a call, and you guys are back out there that day usually. But I also like the fact that you're doing some strategic planning for the next, for the future, and all the applications and being able to track where your trash truck is and where pogo is going to be and everything else. I think that's important, because in this age of instant gratification for residents, they want to know right now where, you know, where their services are, so I think you guys are hitting the mark on that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Finn?
Thank you, Mayor. So the first question, did we hit the mark? And I think the answer is absolutely yes. I love the fact that we continue to try and improve, which is incredibly important. This piece for me is always, I personally think it's kind of the hallmark of what we do here in Peoria. I really do. And you made a comment about compassion for the people that we serve, and this is one of, this is one of the areas where it comes down to our people, really, because this is really a people-based type of service, and most people, like any business, you really don't appreciate it until, you know, it's just an expectation. My trash is going to get picked up every day, to your point, at the exact same time, right? And until something goes wrong, you know, everybody's happy, but they don't truly appreciate it. But I'm just, it's hard for me to say how appreciative I am of the employees that we have here in the city, especially in public service, public safety. I just, to me, this is one of the most important things that we do for our citizens on a daily basis, and I think we do a fantastic job of it, and I think it really truly is kind of the hallmark of what we do here in Peoria. So I think you're hitting the marks. Please keep striving to get better, however we can do that.
Go compliment to the...
Yeah, they're fantastic. I can't say enough good things.
Councilmember Patena?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Kevin, you're hitting the mark, and you are providing superior public service. All of our divisions provide that for our citizens. I've seen time and again how responsive we are to our citizens. I hear it all the time when I'm out with constituents, how responsive our departments are to them and how quickly they get back to them, and how happy they are with that service. So I hear that, I do hear that all the time. Police and fire are among the best in the entire state, and you're correct, so many of our departments are accredited. Getting accredited is really no easy task, and what it does, being accredited makes you perform at a much higher level. And again, we have so many of our departments that are accredited performing at a very high level. So thank you for all you do. You hit the mark.
And I just wanted to say that I'm glad that you're continually looking for new ways to increase your superior service. You're doing a great job. I really like that you are bringing interns in, because, you know, we often times, you know, I don't have enough people to hire in those kinds of positions, that, you know, we aren't just pulling them right out of college. So that's really great. I love the new software. I love the ability to be able to, you know, look up on your phone and find out who's coming next, or find out any information that you want to know. And I love the fact that we have five and a half years' worth of water credits. I hope our citizens understand that and appreciate. That is a huge discipline, a huge savings that we have done for years and years and years to make sure that we are taking our full allocation and making sure that we save it for a rainy day, not rainy day. That's what I meant. I'm glad to see the bike program is coming back in PD, and it's amazing to me, all of the departments that answer to you. Wow.
Well, these aren't just answering to me, they're just, this was, I was tasked with bringing them all together to try to...
You're just in charge of the presentation. I see. Well, you did a great job on the presentation.
So much.
Yeah, so thanks. You're hitting the mark.
I'll be happy to tell Chief Miller where to go next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We save smart growth for last, as it captures our planning efforts moving forward, truly serving as a foundation for the other initiatives. And in the interest of time, I'm going to yield the rest of my time to Chris Hawkins.
Great. Well, I get to be the caboose on this train tonight, so I'm going to very quickly talk about the topic of smart growth. Smart growth is one of those words that is used a lot, and each community has its own adaptation of that, but essentially, what smart growth at its core is, it promotes a balanced community that offers choice. Choice in how we get places, choice in the types of housing and where we want to live, and choices in the types of place we want to patronize. It also is growth that occurs in a manner that reinforces fiscal sustainability. Mayor, as you pointed out, it's important to keep our dollars in the community in which we live. That's a part of fiscal sustainability. And also, it's a type that minimizes our imprint on the natural environment and ensures that we grow with a logical extension of infrastructure, as opposed to scattered growth or leapfrog development. And finally, it promotes a community that is distinctive, socially connected, and a sense of pride and identity in who it is. Our first pillar of smart growth seeks to advance our community through a network of distinctive destinations or interesting places to be in the community, and we approach this through intentional land use decisions that are strategic and sustainable. Now, we've had some recent examples of distinctive development that are literally in progress. I'm very excited about them. You've seen them over the last several council meetings. Our staff has worked very hard to collaborate with the development community to help shape developments that are more distinctive and advance our placemaking objectives. One of those is Sunrise Promenade, which is going through the permitting process right now at Happy Valley and Lake Pleasant Parkway. This is a development that integrates public space with a kind of a good sense of arrival that integrates and connects a horizontal mixed use with residential and commercial at the same location. Another development that we're very excited about that is under construction now is Paradise at P83, which is at 75th and Paradise Avenue. Of course, this is a splashy, more urban, more contemporary, multifamily project that will help activate the P83 district. And then also with Old Town, the historic heart of the city, I think today, as I drove around, I might have seen five or six different construction projects in Old Town. It's exciting. This is the most activity I've seen in the 20 years in my term, and what this project shows you up here is, this is the payroll geeks, but this is just one of many projects that are ongoing in Peoria, in the Old Town area, rather. Going forward, we are in the midst, as you know, of the general plan update. We have a real opportunity to realign land uses citywide and make sure that we are, in fact, intentional where we place those different land uses. And we have an opportunity to establish what I'll call tiered growth policies. So let me just pause there for a second and explain what that is. Tiered growth is a policy structure that will enable the council to consider decisions that, let's say, a project is miles outside of where the current limits of infrastructure are. It allows the council the discretion to take a position on that project, whether or not it might comply with the land use category. So it's not an urban growth boundary, but it allows us, and enables us, a little bit of more muscle, a little more tools to grow more organically, as opposed to maybe something that's well outside of our boundary. We also have funding and... We also have funding and a consultant on board to elevate our commercial design standards. They've been in place since 2008. They've served us well, but I think it's time, given the needs of today and the expectations of today, to elevate those objectives. Finally, the redevelopment of river systems. Not only are the river systems the recreational spines of the city, but they're a real hidden gem here in the community. We have funds earmarked in the upcoming CIP that you'll see for the North Skunk Creek Trail. We believe it's a real opportunity to engage with partners, like perhaps ASU, to help us reimagine that corridor and create an inviting space. We'll look for that in the budget presentation. The next pillar of smart growth reflects our diverse population and seeks to advance quality housing options for all segments throughout our community. We recognize that people seek housing, they seek lifestyle choice, whether it's first time or move-up homebuyers, executive style, those that want low maintenance, those that want to live close to jobs or services. In the current realm, we continue to see strong growth in the traditional, single-family residential sector, particularly for the north-central Peoria and around Bastancia. And additionally, our Housing and Neighborhood Services Department, they continue to leverage HUD funding through partnerships with Habitat and others in getting low-mod income families into homeownership opportunities. But there's some other trends you should be aware of. We've seen an uptick recently in multifamily residential options beyond traditional multi-story apartments. In fact, in the next council meeting, we have a project coming forward that will, is a for-sale condo project, which of course, we don't have a lot of in the city of Peoria, so you'll see that soon. We continue to have strong interest in rental casita projects that bring single-family living as a rental option. As you know, nationally, our population continues to change. People are getting married later in life, they're starting a family later in life, and so looking for more dynamic options. So, we're trying to be, we're seeing the market respond to these changes in the community. But I think as we address these changes, these trends, I think what's really important is that we stay on target and we not compromise our design expectations. That's critically important. Going forward, we have significant opportunities for the general plan update, repositioning aging commercial centers with the changes in the retail landscape that we're seeing throughout the country, right? We have the opportunity to try to reimagine or reinvest in some of our aging commercial centers, perhaps the introduction of residential options or mixed-use options, a little more flexibility in how those corners are designated. In fact, we've had some interest, for example, at Peoria Crossing. That's an example of a project that has stalled in terms of new pad growth in that commercial center. So, that's an opportunity there. And then also, the opportunity to provide mixed housing options in activity centers. We'll talk to you more about activity centers in our general plan update, but these are key areas where we expect strategic and intensive growth. Nextly, we believe that embracing our cultural and natural heritage elevates our distinction as a community, as a livable community, rather. It's important that we preserve and celebrate those features that form the heritage and landscape of our community. A few years ago, we were successful in acquiring Sunrise Mountain, keeping it from being another housing development, as you know, which of course, is a lasting legacy for our citizens into the future. Last year, Palaverdy Park Interpretive Trail was constructed and unveiled. This park is on the National Register of Historic Places and joins the most recent addition, which, as you know, is the Old Main, which was placed on the National Register a few months ago. Old Main is now the fourth property on the growing list of recognized properties. Going forward, efforts are already underway to get the Peoria Jail on the National Register of Historic Places. This building was constructed in 1939 as a Works Progress Administration building, and actually was constructed for $2,000, if you can believe it, in 1939. So, at that time, it was a holding facility for not only prisoners, but also, it was our town hall. And imagine, our first council meeting was held at the Peoria Jailhouse. So, imagine holding a council meeting with prisoners behind you. So. Now, in the natural realm, we're doing everything we can to preserve open space through our Desert Lands Ordinance and our Hillside Ordinances, while we continue to explore additional revenue sources. One bright light at the legislature is with two bills that have been dropped that are proposing to restore the Heritage Fund. So, we're tracking this, we're hopeful, and it's been out of commission for about 10 years, but hopefully a heartbringer for better things to come. And then finally, there is a need to expand educational awareness and outreach efforts so citizens can continue to be good stewards of the desert. So, with the formation of the new Trails Division in John Sefton's area, we're hopeful this is an area that could help bridge that effort. Finally, the last pillar of smart growth is fostering a community with a strong sense of place. So, why is that important? It's important because we believe a sense of place is rooted in identity. It instills civic pride and engagement in the community. So, anywhere USA becomes a community of distinction. So, how do we do this? Well, we need to ensure that whether it's public investment or through development, we seek opportunities to create distinction through the meaningful addition of art, public spaces, and recreational amenities. So, those features create interest, distinction, they invite discussion, they invite community, and interesting doesn't always have to be costly, as we're learning. Those efforts have already been deployed in P83, which at one time, as you all know, was a nondescript commercial area, really, without an identity. Now, it's a district with an identity. And in fact, we continue to get anecdotal evidence that the name is catching on, that people recognize it as a place name. Also with Old Town, while Old Town has struggled in prior years, it has always had good bones, and with your guidance and support, I believe it's now seeing the seeds of change. There's a number of projects, this shows you the pergola that was placed outside of the coffee shop near the Axiom Church, but there's a number of things going on with the hotel, with the Payroll Geeks, and other projects that are going on. Going forward, we will continue to look for opportunities to elevate sense of place, whether events, our projects, or landmark signs. Earlier, I talked about the Sunrise Mountain. The CIP that's going to be coming before you, I should mention, has identified funding for a trailhead at this iconic mountain, so there'd be another way to access this wonderful resource in north Peoria. Additionally, efforts are underway, as I mentioned, to update our design review principles. They have evolved over the years. Our community's evolving, right? So, we need to make sure our standards respond to the desires of our community. Finally, as I wrap up, I want to recognize a key component of smart growth is engaging the community and finding ways to leverage technology and innovation to access a broader segment of our community. People access government differently than they did in years past, and they're increasingly looking to online sources. With Jen in the Office of Communication, I think we're well poised and we're in good hands to look to the future and move that effort forward. So, with that in mind, I wanted to stop there and get a sense, are we approaching smart growth in the right way? I've got a couple of questions up there for your consideration, but I'd like to hear from you.
Okay. Counsel, we are just about out of time here. So, shake your head, yes or no, if you think, tell me if you think they're doing good.
Yes.
Yes.
Very good.
Yes, yes. Okay, I'm going to speak for them. So, I really appreciate your flexibility. I appreciate your understanding that our community is evolving. This is the first time that I've seen you be so changing in how the general plan is and our design standards are taking shape. It's really commendable. I love that you're taking a look at who lives here and who is going to live here in the future, and how can we make sure that we have all the options available for them. And thank you for making sure that open space is one of the things that we protect.
Great. Thank you, Mayor.
So, I would love to say lots, lots more of that, but we're out of time. So, thank you for doing a great job.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to, against the backdrop of the hard-working key thought leaders who put this all together, just want to thank you for two things, not only for your feedback tonight, but for the vision in providing us these broad and aspirational, innovative statements that help us frame how we set ourselves apart as a community of distinction. One important thing for you to know, you saw all the next items, the things that are coming up next. The list is a lot longer than what you saw up there. So, that really is what's coming next, is all of those things and more. Our sleeves are rolled up, there's plenty more to come. We're going to check in with you again in the future on these things, keep you up to date. And beyond the folks you see on the board up here, the next big push is further into the organization deeper to get this really ingrained in our culture at a much deeper level. So, I thank you for your time.
Truly exciting. I mean, really commendable, exciting. I mean, this is the way we want our city to move forward, and this is how citizen-centric we want to be. I hope that a lot of our citizens are at home watching to see what's going to happen in the city of Peoria. It's just exciting. Thank you.
That is all we have. You have 28 seconds to enjoy on your own.
Thank you. We are adjourned until our 7:00 PM meeting.